And let's start the meeting of the city council of Laker Village on today, Monday, August fifteenth. I would ask for the clerk to do roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Present.
Councilmember Jennings.
Present.
Councilmember Canes. Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Madam Mary, you can have a call.
Thank you, and I invite everyone that's on Zoom and in the audience to stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So before the approval of the agenda, I ask for a motion to excuse Councilwoman Barb Canes.
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Canes.
Second.
It's been moved in second, if we can just have a roll call on that, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And also, before we go into the approval of agenda, I know that tonight is, I think it's been five years since I've seen this room this crowded. But just in due respect for everyone that's in here, is that once we go through all of the comments, all of the item actions, that we can all just be respectful of each other in keeping comments down to a minimal in the audience. And that's just about it, so that's all I ask, thank you.
I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's moved, moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And now we come to the part of the public comments for items on the agenda that are on the agenda. You're limited to three minutes, and we're going to stick to it very to the T. So if there's anybody that would like to say anything about something that is on the agenda, please either come to a microphone or raise your hand in Zoom. And this is for the things that's on the agenda.
Get the, actually get the one closer to the front, yeah, that's the, that's the study session agenda.
You can state your name, we don't have to state your address unless you just want to.
The name is Jason Hammond of Laker Village, contractor. I noticed that there's proclamation from Mark Pietrowski on this agenda, and I just want to say how much I've appreciated his leadership. While I've been on the planning commission, he's taught me a lot. I really enjoyed working with him, and I'm sad to see him go, but his contributions to the city have been great, and I just want to add my comment to what the city council is going to offer to him tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for anything that's on the agenda? Anyone that would like to speak? Anyone? Okay, so we'll be moving on to the special proclamation, and this is a proclamation from Mark Pietrowski. I'm not going to read the whole proclamation, but I will try to take and do both. So it is a proclamation for Mark Pietrowski, I know I might be messed up. Whereas we are here today to express our appreciation to planning commission chair Mark Pietrowski and to honor him for his distinguished service for the City of Laker Village Planning Commission. And then I'm going to just jump down and say now therefore, being resolved, I, Michael Garrett, mayor of the City of Laker Village, on behalf of the citizens of the City of Laker Village, do hereby present this proclamation in honor of Mark Pietrowski with sincere gratitude for his commitment to our community. And we will enter this with the sill of the City of Laker Village on this day, fifteenth day of August twenty twenty-two. And I believe we still have to accept it, no, I don't think we have to accept it. We're going.
Yeah, I just want to add the comment, I've served with Mark for the last five years on the planning commission, as Jason had said, his, his, his leadership and his knowledge is second to none. And his demeanor on the planning commission has been great, it's just, he's been a great leader and a great chair of the planning commission, and I think we all owe him a debt of gratitude, so just wanted to thank Mark.
I second that. Pardon?
I was going to speak.
No.
I also would like to thank Mark Pietrowski for his service to our city. I served with him on the planning commission for five years. He was always professional, dedicated, committed to our community, and he definitely will be the best.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the city council and will be approved by one motion, there will be no separate discussion. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately immediately after consent agenda approval in its normal sequence on the regular agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Oh, gee.
Okay, you got it, just the, okay, start all over.
First.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, you did the first one. You have a second, and now what was the discussion you want to pull?
We'd like to pull G.
So it has to be re re-done.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, going item D, July twenty twenty-two, the first report for separate discussion.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any further discussion? So actually, yes, the discussion now?
No, there's no discussion on the consent agenda.
Okay.
So there's a motion, a second, and then roll call.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, moving to item D.
Page thirty-eight, I have some questions on the attorney bill. There are a couple of things on page thirty-eight, draft notice and public hearing on special land use for two seven seven zero one Southfield Road. Draft special land use resolution for one eight four one one West Four Mile Road, transmit Sainte-City. Page thirty-nine, there's a review correspondence from project manager, Reed Panera P U D, multiple charges for that. And then I've noticed on the bills, there is a lot of time spent reviewing and responding to correspondence from attorney for cannabis business, inquiring about city ordinances. And I was just wondering, are these charges billed back to the people who are applying for these things, or to Panera Bread, or how does that work?
So currently, we don't have a pass-through for our project reimbursement, it is something that actually we discussing it with Ms. Steck today about doing, especially with some of these bigger projects that we have that are incurring additional costs, not only from my office, but from the planner's office. So that is something that we we did start a discussion about it today, and we will probably pursue that, especially in light of the time that's been spent on that, that P U D project.
We're talking, I mean, one of them was five hundred eighty-five dollars, and so, you know, it does, it does add up, and this is just one month, so I'd like to see that look down, thank you, that's all.
Make a motion for accepting of the for the July twenty twenty-two disbursement reports.
Make a motion to accept the July twenty twenty-two disbursement report.
Support.
It's been moved in second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Motion carrying.
Thank you, now we're moving on to the action request for consideration and approval, the first one up is the House of the Woods offer.
Okay, there is an offer that has been submitted for the House of the Woods property. It is in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars cash offer. Mr. Root is here to discuss that with council if they wish to ask questions. My suggestion to council would be not to discuss a price point, but to determine whether the price offered is what you're willing to accept, or you wish to see something different and have them either come back with another offer, but do not mention any price point.
Good evening, John Root with Keller Williams Realty. Yes, I have reviewed this, or done this to the city administrator, we do have an offer of a hundred thousand dollars cash on the property. We're here to see if council is willing to accept this offer, or if there's something, it could be worked out, it is an initial offer. It's cash, the man has provided proof of funds. There is an amendment on there that I don't think I sent that to the city manager, because I didn't have it at the time. The amendment is subject to getting a survey, also to do an assessment of the property and make sure it's not a toxic waste site. Also, they are taking an ant is. And it is subject to getting some splits, because they plan on building more than one house. And of course, it is subject to any approval by the building department and/or city council. If anyone has any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
Is this a builder, or is it an individual?
Individual. So individual that wants to buy the property, they plan on building two or three houses, this is what they said, and is for, you know, so these are two or three separate properties, they're not a three-unit property or a two-unit property, these are separate properties. And I was a family that plans on building them, and the family members are going to be moving into this house.
So for personal use.
Pardon me?
For personal use, not selling them or whatever.
That's correct, yes, yeah, for their own use, not, at least that's what indicated to me by the other agents, this isn't a co-op broker. It is another agent from Dobie Real Estate in Birmingham, that is presented to you off.
Matt, did you say, we just, we just got this, just a few minutes ago, did you say you saw something?
Yeah, just quickly in there, you're already gabbling me down. Your city attorney reports.
Yeah, but didn't you say it was contingent, oh, here it is, contingent upon the buyer's site plan being approved?
Yeah, that, there was a contingency in here that it was subject to the buyer's site plan approval, which they wouldn't be submitting until after the offer was accepted.
Any type of site plan approval, and I don't inform the other agents in any type, any offer approval of the city.
Well, it just, just the timing of that, I mean, they're indicating that they wouldn't submit it until thirty days after the offer is accepted, but how would the city accept it?
And any site plan has to be submitted with, forthwith as soon as possible. Step one is to see if the city will accept their offer, number one. Step two is for them to submit a site plan within a certain amount of days. And of course, anything we write up is subject to review by our city attorney.
Thank you.
If deemed necessary by council and city.
We have a realtor on here, what, Karen, any thoughts on there?
I mean, it's just, I, I like the idea that it's person, could be used for pushing property, the agreement is standard, I mean, there's not anything in here that is out of the ordinary, or we cause red flag or anything like that, it's just, you know, is the price acceptable?
Right.
That's, that's the only thing that I
So we, we have, we currently have like about ninety thousand dollars in cost into this.
At least, yeah, always.
And again, bear in mind, the mantra that I've had since listening to this property is to clean, clean up the brush on the property, this party is willing to take it, and is.
So do you think that that's something that you should honor or?
I mean, I guess in the long run, we'll increase our tax base. They're taking it as is, we have to think about that.
It does, it does cover the cost that we put into it. Just the question is, is whether or not we're leaving money on the table.
Exactly.
Can you put an option back in there that if they don't build within a certain amount of time, that the city can refund that money back to them, and the city still owns it? Or they would pay tax on it, as opposed to it sitting vacant as it is right now, and there is no tax on it, but it's just vacant property, so it doesn't really increase the value significantly, tax dollar-wise. But is there an ability to put that provision in there?
Do we want it back?
No, that's the question, you know, if you're concerned about somebody buying it and just leaving it empty, you know, that that would be the concern, you'd like to see it developed, so that it does have a tax base that is created from that, that's the end goal. But that's just another discussion point for council to consider.
Right, if I could add something, we do or should have in there, get them able to buy a site plan within a certain, specified by within a certain period of time, thirty days, fifteen days. If they have a site plan, that means there's a more, more seriousness on the part of the purchaser. Number one, and maybe at that time, you say, okay, this must be completed within, we're starting within a certain period of time. Granted, it's not beneficial to the city, they have a property sitting there vacant, and we can have taxes on it, or maybe somebody else would be interested in building something. But again, it would be subject to getting a site plan approval within a certain period of time, thirty days, fifteen days, wherever council decides, number one, number two, they have to give a little more seriousness on the part of the purchaser. I don't think these people want to just have a vacant piece of property, say, I own the mansion property, I mean, right off the top of my head. But at the same time, I can understand the city's point of view that they want development there, and not just to be sitting vacant.
Yeah, Scott, we can, I mean, the, an approved site plan, they have two years on an approved site plan, right? So we couldn't, could we still limit that beyond that, or isn't that?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend limiting it beyond what's already in the ordinance, there, we currently do have limitations that if it's, if the, once the site plan has been approved, and these are, I apologize, it's like very cloudy. I could barely make out.
Getting a clip on these things.
But no, it, I wouldn't recommend limiting it further than what's already in the ordinance, we do have provisions in there that that the approvals of the site plan expire if construction hasn't commenced within a certain period of time. You know, my only concern would be that if, I guess, to what John is saying, the site plan, if it's not approved, or whatever their, their visions for this property are, then that would provide them with a mechanism to back out of this agreement, that, that would be my concern, and I think hammering that down, having a better understanding of what they're envisioning is crucial, is crucial.
If the site plan is not approved, that's every possibility, if the site plan is not approved, then, you know, they are entitled to either submit another site plan or with revisions, or they can say, look, we just can't do this, they can back out of the transaction, and their deposit is refunded. You know, that, that's usually how any, any vacant property works that way. Almost every builder knows that there's going to be approvals, permits, and whatnot, good answer to be obtained, that's, that's not something that's been used to lay to build, if it's all over southeast Michigan easily. So I, I think the decision that has been made to this evening is if you're willing to accept this price, number one. Number two, counter to a price that would be acceptable, and then, you know, again, subject to having the city attorney review this, getting the proper verbiage on the land, on the contract. Then we determine, then we go from there as far as getting a site plan approved.
Yeah, I know, just me, in my own personal life, I never take the first offer, so. I mean, again, I mean, Karen, you're the realtor, so I mean, I, I, I'm just, you know, you've got more experience with this than, than, than we do, I mean, do you think, what do you, do you think we should counter, or?
I mean, I'm disappointed that it's this low.
Right, exactly.
Two hundred fifty thousand, so it's kind of, you know, that's, that's a big loss.
We listed it at one fifty, one fifty.
Right.
Well, we worked it down to one fifty. It wasn't always one fifty.
Yeah, it was one ninety before that, so we solicited one fifty.
I thought it started at two fifty with that first agent alone.
Oh, maybe.
The offer started.
Well, with John, it started.
The other, yeah, previous broker was two hundred and fifty thousand, and we brought it down to one ninety. That was back in January, and then we dropped it a month and a half, about two months ago now, down to one fifty. This is the first offer that we've received, written offer. You know, that's about where we're at. And if we, if any offer is accepted, whether it's countered this evening, or whether you accept this offer, it will be put on the market, accepting backup offers, so you never know what's going to come through as far as what they want to have there. They're speaking about building a twenty-two hundred square foot house, so I know the cash within the limits of, you know, within what the city would want. What else they want to do with the property is speculative, anything I see is speculative by my part.
Well, personally, I think that it should be a counter, I just don't know what that looks like.
My suggestion, again, not putting a price out there, is to, you know, if there's true sincerity in the offer that the price they have offered is not acceptable, and they need to come back with a different offer. That would be my suggestion, that way you don't tip your hat of what you're, you know, you, we've got it listed at one fifty, so that is the price we're hoping to get. Beyond that, just don't mention a price point and have them come back with another offer.
Yeah, I like that.
I like that idea.
Highest and best.
Okay.
Let's come, we all agree, come back with an, a counter. Okay. Also, I have a quick note on the, the document, they have it checked off as a village or a city.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Make sure they fix that, thank you.
It's a common mistake.
Well, that's why I found it. I know, I understand.
I'll make a motion to reject the current offer and request a a new offer, preferably higher, from the, from Dobie, on their client.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next action item is, thank you.
Thank you.
John.
Is the M M L liability and property pool renewal.
Okay, M M L is our Michigan Municipal League Meadow Brook Liability Property or in Property Pool Renewal Proposal. This is our insurance coverage that we have for all of our, our buildings, our equipment, everything that we own, operate. And our insurance will be effective September first, twenty twenty-two, with the new coverage or the, the proposal, the renewal. And the new proposed price is ninety-one thousand, one hundred ten dollars, which last year was eighty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars, so it's an increase of about three percent. However, we do get a dividend that is returned to us, the M M L liability and property pool voted to return dividends to their customers, so our dividend, once we pay our, our insurance proper renewal is eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, last year it was five thousand something, so this covers, more than covers the increase, so staff's suggestion is to approve the renewal of this proposal.
Thank you, need a motion?
Motion to approve the renewal of the M M L liability property pool renewal proposal at the annual rate of ninety-one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars, effective September first, twenty twenty-two, and authorize the mayor and/or city administrator to sign the related documents.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, next up, we have the Plant Moran Audit Engagement Letter.
All right, our audit engagement letter, um, we entered into a contract with Plant Moran for a five-year engagement. We're doing our professional auditing services last year on April twentieth. Plant Moran has submitted their engagement letter detailing their scope of services, timing of services, and fees and payments for such services. Their audit letter, or engagement letter this year is estimated at forty thousand, and does not include any accounting services that may be required for the completion of the audit, anything in addition to that, so the, we've already contracted with them. This, we just got the engagement letter at the end of June, it's something that had to be into effect, and Pam has already signed this, because our audit is actually taking place this week. But this is just for council to sign off on this going forward, as it is part of our contract. Each year, we get an engagement letter from them, authorizing them to start the audit services, so this is just followed through with that.
Okay. Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve the audit engagement letter from Plant Moran for professional auditing, auditing services in the amount of forty thousand dollars, and authorize the mayor and city admin, and/or city administrator to sign the related documents.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any further discussion?
Just the one thing I'll say is that when we went out to R F P a year ago in April, Plant Moran was our existing auditor, and the, the wardrobe, the contract was actually at a lower rate, so the R F P proposal, or the R F P process actually got them to lower their rate, so save the city some money, so.
Thank you, anyone else? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, city administrator report.
Uh, we've had a lot of stuff going on here at the city, we've been moving along with our sidewalk projects, we've been moving along with our road projects, if you notice the road, just to get my directions, that's the road out there, so this road over here, California, learning streets here, so, yeah, it circles around, doesn't, it's trying to confuse me. But they just tore this up within the last week over here, and that is part of the project that will be taken care of, working to get our letting copper randomized tests done to show where we may or may not have copper, or let our copper lines out there, so Eagle has asked us, there's a formula that they use to complete a randomization of homes that they will select to go in and dig up a portion, so that they can visually see the service line that runs from the water main to the house, and that is underway, we've had a few people that have asked to be excluded from that project, but it is very difficult to get excluded in meet Eagle's criteria on that, unless you meet their criteria, we can't just call in and say so-and-so at how such and such doesn't want you to come into their yard and do that, they, they won't listen to that. If there's a tree in the way, if, if something is preventing that work from happening, then they're more open to hear that, but otherwise, they don't just allow the city to change people who have been placed on that randomized list. If it was up to the city, we would try to work with that, but Eagle kind of pulls the strings on that. I do want to report that we have hired a deputy treasurer, and she will start on the twenty-ninth of this month, so there will be some work to get her on-boarded and a little bit of training done there, but hopefully we can give our current treasurer, and I don't know how much of the community realizes this, Pam has been working twelve-hour days, non-stop, seven days a week, basically. And I, I have to get after her even to eat during the day, she's just swamped doing all of the duties, because we have not had a deputy treasurer in that position for so long. So that will be something that will also help us meet our audit goals and have some segregation of those duties, so she's not doing everything. And I, I just think she's been doing a phenomenal job for the city, so if you have not told her you appreciate the work she's doing, please do so tonight, she is in the yellow in our audience there tonight, in case you don't have Pam. But I, I do want to say that it is great to have somebody coming on new to us, and we'll also be working to replace our code enforcement positions. So if you know of anybody that might be interested in that position, please let me know. We'll be posting that soon. And, um, that's, that's it basically, and my dog is doing okay, so.
That's good.
Life is good now.
Good. Um, city attorney.
Got that gavel? Nothing for me.
Okay, reports of boards, commissions, and committees. We have, um, the July minutes for SACWA and the July minutes for SACRA.
Um, just nice meetings to go to. Um, these were from July. Um, I did get to go to the August meetings, and um, Karen also came to the SACWA meeting, um, and, uh, it was just nice representation to have there, um, to be able to go through what they're, um, detailing, uh, different things. For those of you that are not aware what SACWA is, do anybody know what SACWA means out there? SACWA is Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority, so those are the people that you, uh, pay your bills. Well, we, you pay them to this. I'm still new here. I'm still learning how this all gets funded out, but they provide us with our water, um, that we, we drink in the sewer that goes away. And then SACRA is the Southeastern Oakland County Refuge and Recycling Authority, or Recycling and Refuge Authority, something like that. But they're the ones that come and pick up your trash, pick up your, your grass, your, uh, leaves, your tree branches, that kind of stuff. So, uh, those are meetings that, um, uh, there's, uh, many communities that are involved in that, and, and we pay into that. And I encourage you, uh, this is posted out on the website. You can also go to their websites and read any of the, um, the minutes that are out there, but those are their four councils in joint entry.
My, thank you.
I have a couple boards. I'm not, I'm not listed there, but I've got a big, um, there is a, uh, infrastructure meeting this Wednesday, um, at, uh, six-thirty in the community room downstairs. So anybody who is interested in attending that, we ask you to, to please come by. Um, and then the planning commission at our last meeting, um, we approved the site plan for Panera Bread, uh, with a variety of, of conditions on them, um. So their, their loading area, um, won't stray from the, the schedule of the current operations. Uh, their dumpster pickup time will also not stray from the, the, the current, uh, operations. But we did ask for, uh, taller screen on the dumpster, uh, so more landscaping. Uh, the parking lot needs to be, uh, striped and sealed such that it looks like one complete, uh, one complete, uh, coherent unit. Um, irrigation is required on-site for landscaping. Um, they will be, uh, creating a, uh, gathering area on the north, northeast corner of the property, uh, with benches and, uh, concrete, concrete pad kind of a gathering area, and we did ask that they, uh, a single-purpose trash receptacle, permanent, uh, fresh receptacle be put there, as well as the uh, concrete slab to not just be a concrete slab, but to, to be some type of decorative concrete or stamped concrete. The lighting plan needs to be consistent with the site plan and compliant with the ordinance, and then the other, I guess the, the, the major thing that we, as the planning commission did, um, so, so this is being developed as a planned unit development, and a planned unit development, and Scott, keep me on a track, um, is basically, uh, a, a concept where some of the zoning ordinances can be slightly relaxed in return for a community benefit from the, uh, developer, uh, something that benefits the entire community, and, and we felt as the planning commission that the community benefit that was being offered was a little bit light, um, relative to, um, you know, the, the laxing of some of these, these, uh, zoning ordinances, and so we asked for a, uh, a stronger, um, larger, uh, community, uh, benefit, and we strongly suggested a, a bus enclosure for, uh, the bus stop that is outside of Panera. It's kind of a win-win-win situation for everybody. It's a win for the city because we get another, uh, enclosure for the people who use the, the bus system. Their employees, you know, have an enclosure for when they're coming to and from work, and then they get more business because while people are waiting there, they can go in and get something to drink or get something to eat. So, um, the motion that was accepted directed the city attorney to, um, work on that as part of the development agreement that's required under the, the, the PUD process. Uh, and then lastly, there are a lot of things, uh, but lastly, uh, was the, um, uh, like the little things, the monument sign, uh, is still, uh, they can still use that up on the corner if they want. Thought that was my wife. That's my wife, Ringtone. I knew I silenced my phone. Um, and then, uh, they, they typically have, uh, their, their logo painted on the, on the side of the building, that, and this was going to be on the side of the building that faces the, the neighborhood, so we asked them not to do that. They agreed. Uh, no drive-through signs on the west, west elevation, and the lighted signs go off except for the ones on Southville Road. So those are all, uh, things that were, were put into the, uh, site plan that was approved, uh, for Panera Bread. Does anything, Stan?
No, I, I'll just add to that, that we do have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday morning with them to kind of, uh, finalize that development agreement.
Yeah, set.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's it, yeah.
Okay, um, any unfinished new business? Oh, for commission, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Um, I just wanted to report on the Southfield Public Schools' millage. Um, there was some questions and conversations about, uh, the fact that I didn't share information, but there wasn't information to share. Um, they will be putting a millage proposal on the ballot in November. Um, uh, July sixteenth, I had a conversation with two of the board members, and at that point, they were still developing their plan. And then on August second, I spoke with the board president, and she said that they would be in touch, that they still didn't have everything worked out. Uh, then last week, we all received an invitation to a joint meeting, and then the plan appeared in the Southfield Sun, and, um, there's an information that was shared, but they are going to be closing McIntyre, our, our, um, community school, and, uh, planning to make it into a community center. So I'm not sure if they were hesitant about sharing that sad news with me, and that's why they didn't tell me. Uh, but anyway, um, there are, uh, a few meetings scheduled, a few town halls scheduled for the community on Tuesday nights, and then we are supposed to be meeting, the council is supposed to be meeting with the school board, uh, August twenty-second or August twenty-third.
It, it's a proposed date. They, they have to confirm whether they can meet. They just asked for available dates that council had here.
How's that? Um, now unfinished or any new business? Okay. Going to public comment. You have three minutes to speak. And again, from what we were saying from the beginning, that, uh, just to be respectful and keep it, uh, everything at a, at a low roar, um, we're holding to the three minutes. Um, and everyone has a right to speak what they want to say. It's a First Amendment right. So whoever would like to make a public comment, you can either come to the microphone or raise your hand in the Zoom. And I'm going to take the people in the audience first, even though I see your hand up, Saleem, all righty. So just still put your hand up in Zooms, I know exactly, uh, who to call next. So if there's anyone that's in the room that would like to make a comment, um, please come to the microphone. And you just can state your name. You do not have to state your address unless you just would like to. And what she said.
Hello, my name's Lauren Barris, Lathrow Village resident. My husband and I had a meeting of concerned residents in our home last Wednesday night to discuss recalling councilperson Karen Miller. Our objectives were to discuss pursuing recall election or strategically planning for next elections. Opinions were shared. Some were very passionate in their communication. All were focused on possible solutions. As the meeting was coming to an end, someone noticed Ms. Miller hiding behind the neighbor's bushes, eavesdropping, and she was called out. Surprisingly, Miller came out from behind the bushes, phoned up, and appeared to be recording us. The sudden revelation that a city official was spying and recording us inflamed guests and had people reacting in differing degrees of disbelief, anger, and shock. Miller demanded the names of my guests in my backyard as she filmed them. I could not believe it. Guests were videotaping. Ms. Miller was videotaping. The neighbor and one of my guests got into a heated back and forth. Tempers were rising. Some guests left and stayed at the other end of my property while the conflict ensued. My neighbor threatened to get a gun and then retreated inside his home. This was captured on video and audio. We know he has guns. At that point, the police were called. As residents of Lathrow Village, we are absolutely incensed that an elected official that represents all Lathrow Village residents would covertly position herself to eavesdrop on a meeting of residents. We have a complaint as it relates to the Michigan Penal Code regarding eavesdropping upon private conversation, which is a felony. If councilperson Miller was reporting us as she was eavesdropping behind the bushes, she and the neighbor would be in violation of this code. There is question as to the definition of reasonable expectation of privacy in open spaces such as a backyard. Regardless, the antics, antics of Ms. Miller remain egregious and highly unethical. We've heard the spin that she was canvassing the neighborhood for a meet and greet location for the new city administrator and just happened on our meeting. We don't believe it for a minute. And if Ms. Miller would like to dispute that and live up to the claim she made on the video that she doesn't lie, we would like her to do so tonight. As best, it was an unpalatable act for an city official to spy on residents she serves. At where she has caused, caused trauma responses from several of my guests who felt ambushed, freaked out, and due to the covert spying by a city official. Personally, I've had trouble sleeping, and my neighbor has since been acting in a threatening manner toward both me and my husband. We have installed cameras, and we've warned friends and family about the threat near our home. All of this because we were exercising our First Amendment rights. In the end, councilperson Miller, we see that you are clearly not interested in representing everyone in the city. You're looking for a gotcha moment, and you've found one, but it was against your own constituency. And for that reason, I would like to ask you to step down from the council immediately.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that is in the audience? I see Dawn. Um, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Come on over to, come on over to the.
Um, I felt, um.
Anyone who gave your name?
Lori Kuns, K-U-N-Z. I felt obligated to respond after that last comment because, um, I think it's unfair as I had a private meeting, yeah, that I paid for myself in the community room, and the word got around that I had invited some neighbors, and it was going to be about things happening in the city. I got called out on camera in this meeting by Kelly Garrett for doing that when she actually walked into our room, knowing we were having it, and made a statement like, or didn't say anything, but then later called me out on camera because three councilmembers would have been inappropriate. And she went and FOIA'd my meeting so she could hear everything we talked about. And that Monday's meeting, you addressed every single thing that was a problem, including the FOIA requests. And when I volunteered to pay for a lawyer for Karen to get those, because you have refused to give them, you said the next meeting, four thousand dollars for those FOIA requests. So, um, our council member has done it herself. Our mayor, I'm sorry.
So I'm going to take the liberties right here because you're just, excuse, 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 excuse me. I'm still talking. Thank you. So I want to, um, because I'm the leader of the, 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 the council, so I can speak. So. Yeah. So here's the difference, okay? The difference is you had a meeting in a public place.
I paid for it myself.
But it's still a, it's still a public place, and anyone who has anything that has to do with Lathrow Village in a public place can FOIA it. There are cameras on both sides, so you are able to get audio and video of everything. And it was not just me saying for the FOIA of how much it costs. I paid for it too. You have to pay for a FOIA. If you go and I've sent it to you, and I've sent it to, and I've sent it to our, I only had to spend, I forgot how much it was. I'll get you my check so you can see it, but you do have to pay for a FOIA. It depends on how in-depth the FOIA is, how many pages are involved, and you can go to FOIA, F-O-I-A dot gov, and it gives you all of the information there. But thank you for, for, um, letting me know, or letting us know. I do appreciate it. I, you still have some time if you still want to say something.
So in other words, you're encouraging backyard parties to make your, um, plans to FOIA someone or get someone out of the council when I was just trying to inform the neighbors of how to use ClickFlix, what's going on, and I did nothing wrong. And I, I will attest to that. So anyone can FOIA it, and it's just not fair.
When it comes to public, when it comes to public, you can FOIA anything for City of Lathrow Village. Going to someone's backyard is something completely different.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm gonna stop. I'll stop. And you know what? I'll stop.
Here, get her FOIAs. Bruce can ask for one to get it. Any neighbor can get it, and then you charge her four thousand dollars.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait.
The FOIA, and he's not allowed to do that. Why is he in the office? He's the one hiding the files that we need to see.
Okay, we'll respond when it comes to the mayor and council comments, but thank you. Do you have anything else? You still have some more time.
Um, no, but thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Thank you.
My name is Jason Hammond. I'm Lathrow Village resident. First, I actually want to thank councilmember Miller for continuing to call attention to the issue the city continues to have with communicating with residents in a timely manner. I live on California East. We're in the middle of the road construction project, and in speaking with my neighbors, I know we are getting inconsistent relief responses to our queries about the project. Communication between the city, its contractors, and residents, and business owners can and must improve it, so thank you for bringing attention to that issue. Second, on April second, as she just said, Lori Kuns organized an invitation-only meeting of concerned Lathrow Village residents to discuss issues they have with city council and city staff. The meeting took place in our community room, which is a public venue owned by the city and its residents. Councilmembers Miller and Ken has attended this meeting. Mayor Garrett was at city hall that day to meet with city staff members, became aware of the meeting organized by Ms. Kuns, and poked her head in the room. You just heard that story. People attending this meeting clearly became aware that Mayor Garrett was aware that they were meeting. There's absolutely nothing concerning about any of that. On August, to me, on August tenth, twenty twenty-two, myself and other concerned Lathrow Village residents met at the private home of Bob and Lauren Barris to discuss issues we have with city council. The meeting took place in the backyard of a private residence owned by a private property owner. No city council members were in attendance at that meeting. Councilmember Miller became aware of the meeting. It doesn't matter to me how she became aware of the meeting. Councilmember Miller chose to hide in Bob and Lauren's neighbor's backyard and eavesdrop on us until we told her we knew she was there. The only thing concerning about this is that councilmember Miller thought it was acceptable for an elected official to literally spy on the constituents she was elected to represent. During this event, Bob and Lauren's neighbor got into an exchange of words with some of us. During this exchange, the neighbor said, and I'm quoting, "I'm gonna get a gun." Police were called. Police reports were filed. Bob and Lauren's neighbor to this day continues to attempt to intimidate Bob and Lauren, as you heard Lauren just say. There's absolutely nothing that makes it okay to threaten to get a gun in this context. It is absolutely unacceptable for any resident in our city to attempt to intimidate their neighbors. Everything that happened in this event in August tenth was a direct result of councilmember Miller's continuing to make accusations of inappropriate actions for fellow councilmembers and the city attorney without evidence. And that there's, uh, badgering city employees and mistreating them and convincing some Lathrow residents, again, without evidence, that there is corruption in our city. Having disagreements about political issues is not evidence of corruption. Personal notes without corroborating evidence are not evidence of corruption. I ask for councilmember Miller to please stop making decisions that increase divisiveness in our city and start taking action for proposing real solutions to real problems our city is facing with. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Just a reminder to please keep the whispering down. It's hard to hear when people are, are trying to talk.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lauren Rory, and I'm a resident in, in, uh, Lathrow Village. My question is, I received, I didn't bring the paper with me. I received on last week about cannabis shots that's gonna be resonating in our community, and I would like to know, is that true? Or is it gonna be something that's gonna be on the ballot for us to vote?
It's gonna be on the ballot.
Okay, so then therefore they're already staying to, I, on the letter that I received last week in the mail, unfortunately, I forgot because I was trying to rush to video. Um, so they already got the designated places to where they're gonna equip the shops. It's just a matter of us. When I was on the list, they said.
It's a, it's a area where they could. It's a area where they could possibly go, but there is not a location that has been identified. And the residents and in yourself, you have the decision in your hands to figure out whether or not we're gonna have cannabis in Lathir on the November ballot.
It's gonna be on this November ballot.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. If there's anyone else in.
Hello, my name is John Shaw and I'm a Lathir Village resident. Lathir Village resident. I've prepared a statement for tonight's meeting that I would like to read. Unfortunately, there's a three-minute limit. My statement is six and a half minutes long. I intend to read my statement and it's entirely uninterrupted after the closing gavel of tonight's meeting. I will give a hard copy of my statement to the city so that may be included into the record. I cordially invite everyone here to remain after the meeting to listen to the reading of my statement, especially all members of the city council. I thank everyone in advance for the six and a half minutes I will be taking out of your busy schedules.
Thank, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Debbie Hopland Dunn. Wait, I hope I can do this in time. Um, and I am a Lathir Village resident. For the record, I don't really know any of you very well. I'm familiar with Bruce and Kelly because I have attended many city council meetings in the last five years or so. Also, I'm not a member of Facebook and I'm not a member of the villagers. I'm speaking this evening because I'm extremely disappointed and quite frankly embarrassed by my city council. I think Lathir Village residents can expect their city council members to speak respectfully, professionally and honestly to each other, to the people in the city, to the people city, in the city administrative, administration and to the residents. You have all been elected to your position. Your friends, family and neighbors may have gotten you elected. However, you represent and serve all of us. I have a couple of specific comments. Jalen, I thought that you attending the MML seminar, whatever the letters are, was wonderful and it was a great idea to suggest that the entire council attend together. I'm very sorry that you were treated so dismissively. I don't know what's going on with the FOIAs even though they're mentioned every month. Last month, infrastructure was mentioned regarding the FOIA. If they're going to be mentioned during a meeting, please explain what they are for. If the FOIAs are in regards to the city's finances, I have been at the last few or more meetings from Plant Moran. And I've listened to their recordings of the accounting of the city's financial situation. Each time the accountants have said what a great job the city and council has done with the city's budget. One year, they reported that our city had actually made some money at a time that other cities were having to use their rainy day funds. I also want to take this time to thank our city administration for the hard work and dedication to our city. I can't imagine how difficult their jobs have been during this time when there have been so many open positions. I thank you very much, but I have to hurry. In addition, I would like to welcome you soon to Lathir Village. We really truly are a wonderful city and I hope that you'll be happy here. Although I attend many of the city council meetings, I do not speak often. After months of watching these meetings and one angry letter that I have not sent or read to the council, I ask this of you. Please begin to conduct, start conducting yourselves in a manner befitting of the office of which you are elected with respect and professionalism that brings honor and respect to our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Mary Nukian. I've been a resident since 1986. I just want to say that I'm sickened at what has happened to our city in the past few years. This all seemed to go down with the first road proposal. I mean, you can go back in the villager group and just type in road proposal and you'll see the attacks. Anybody that was against the High Village Road proposal got attacked. And I was one of them by Maintenan, by Michael Keenan, by Jason Hammond every day. Until finally, I thought I was gonna, I had to message Rob and say, can you please get Mike off my back? The city has been after Karen. I don't know, everything is, is all about Karen. It's always Karen's fault. If you, if I went in there and said, it's cloudy today, Jason Hammond would probably say, it's Karen's fault because she ran on transparency. I mean, it's getting that ridiculous. I was caught, I was hinted at being a racist over the weekend in Villager and Dawn Medley got all over me. I mean, because of a comment that I said to you, I called you out on something you said to Karen and I'm not going to go into that. But she took it as that I was attacking you. Nobody read the 170 comments that were attacking Karen. I'm like just getting sick of this already. And I have Dawn, I have Lauren Barris's message she sent to me. So she saw Karen come out on the deck. The neighbors saw Karen. They were yelling horrible things to Karen. Does anyone want to ask Karen what they were saying to her about her personal life and how vile it was? I mean, this, it, I'm just fed up. You people need to get it together and just work together and get off her back already.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in the audience?
Well, it's a parent's statement about being uncovered. I'm like saying the last person was not there, so.
That was her name?
Oh, please state your name for the record. I'm sorry.
Mary Moy, resident on Dolores, council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. I was going to talk about the meeting, but I think it's been covered. So maybe I should talk about why I was there, which was that I've been very disturbed by the just the hostility that's sort of overcome council. And I feel that it is at the feet of councilwoman Miller. And I want to say that I want to give an example of the things that she says that I feel are irresponsible and without factual basis. And my example that I brought tonight was the city council meeting of July 25th. When, let me say, I'm not upset with her votes. I'm obsessed with what happens during the discussion between the votes. She's a councilperson and she's entitled to whatever vote she wants. So a city council, July 25th, discussion of the appointment of the acting city clerk to official city clerk. Discussion was had about whether to the, to make the appointment. Ms. Miller explained her objections to the appointment. More discussion was had. Then right before the vote, she said, and I quote, "I received some information. I don't know if it's true or not." And then she, I'm not going to repeat what she said because it's just a rumor, I guess. And this is what goes on. I can bring other instances in other meetings. But this is irresponsible. At the very base level of judgment, it's unkind. And it damages people's reputation because what she said left a question of the staff members' integrity, which was totally unfounded. And I would like these statements, which don't have any basis in fact, not to be stated unless you have facts. Wait until, if you think there's something wrong, get your facts first. I know you think you've been waiting a long time. But lots of FOIA requests take a long time in many places. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that's in the audience that would like to speak? Anyone else in the audience? Um, I don't see Slim there and it was Slim still on there? No, Slim was first. Slim, did you? You had your hand up, but let me know. Dawn?
Good evening, council. Um, last council meeting, a concern was raised regarding Karen Miller's treatment and bullying behavior toward a city employee. There was an email that councilperson Miller sent to Suzie Stack that was unprofessional harassing and much like one would expect from an unhinged person. Not anything that I would expect from a city council person. When confronted with the factual email that she herself wrote, she was unable and unwilling to address the concern, but instead verbally attacked the citizen who FOIA'd the information and who brought the concern. I request that Karen Miller explain how she feels her abusive and repeated unprofessional harassing of city employees is helping Lathir Village. I also ask that she apologize not only to Mr. Hammond, but also to Ms. Stack for how she has continually bullied and negatively impacted them. Regarding the recent attendance of Karen Miller at a, at a private citizens event, I think she should seriously consider her own behavior when it caught, when she chose to crawl around in the bushes and didn't, didn't stop someone from threatening gun violence in Lathir Village. Karen Miller should quickly resign her post and move out of the village. Thank you.
Wow. Okay. Um, is there anyone else that's online? Is, is there anyone else online that would like to speak? Ms. Kuns?
I just want to say really quickly.
Is your time starting now or when you sit down?
Right now. Lori Kuns, I cannot take this anymore. It's ridiculous to be bashing, wasting time. I think anyone has proof of harassment that can document this should contact Susan Montenegro and prove what they are saying because the truth will come out. And this is baloney, all these statements bashing different people. Everyone's taking their turn bashing. Let's just stop this, get on with the agenda and take care of the facts with Susan. And the people that are doing immoral, illegal and bad things are gonna be called out. For real. None of this. She did this. She said this. Stop it. Everyone here is sick of it.
Are you done? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to make a comment?
You have to go to the.
You have to go back to the microphone and state your name.
My name is Lori Kuns. My comment is, does anybody know anything about prayer? Because so much confusion going on already around the world. You got the war going on, Ukraine. You got so much stuff going on around here. I mean, you got this pandemic going on, people dying. We're fighting and muddling over things that's senseless, senseless. We need to get it together. We need to be prayerful. We need to join together in love and unity. That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments in the audience or online? Because you know we have a boatload of comments in our emails already, so. Is there? At, at, go ahead.
First of all, this is the last thing that I want to be doing right now.
Could you please state your name?
Lisa Miller.
Thank you.
This is the last thing that I want to be doing. It's taken everything in my being to stay away from all of this craziness throughout this entire time. I'm gonna try to keep it short because it's extremely emotional for me and my sister. And I just would like everyone to think about their mothers for a minute. How you'd like your mom to be treated. Well, councilwoman Karen Miller is my mother. Several people mentioned that you don't know my mom and it's very obvious that you don't. My mom's my hero. She spends her days and nights doing work for other people, her daughters, her friends, her family, her neighbors. My entire childhood, I looked up to my mom, our friends look up to our mom. People that we went to school with contact my mom over us to have her help give advice, help find a home, help, you know, take them into the next area of their lives. And I think there's something major to be said for that. And she's done extremely great work throughout the years in all of the different areas that she has worked in. But when we're talking about somebody crawling around in the grass and being so scary and she's a type of one woman who, you know, she just trying to do the right thing and trying to help the community. She has nothing personal to gain from this whatsoever. So please just take a minute when you are saying these things and hurting people and just remember like they are a person, they are a mother, they're a neighbor and I just, again, enough.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience? I see Bruce Copas's hand up on Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, my name is Karen Copas. Karen Miller is a friend of mine. I've known her for many years and I agree with her, what her daughter said, Lisa. She's one of the best people that I know. Our council is very, very lucky to have her. In fact, I think she and Barb are the best people on the council. Um, I've been so disappointed in Mayor Garrett and Bruce Cantor at their bullying attitude toward Karen. It's just totally disgusting. And I'm sick of watching it. I, the group that wants to get rid of her. Well, I'm not gonna say what I have to say about them, but I would like to, I would like to see Kelly Garrett and Bruce Cantor apologize to Karen for the bullying. And I remember not so long ago, Ms. Garrett, when a business owner came to a city council meeting and had some very negative things to say about you. And many of us in the community wanted to know what was said and so we FOIA'd it. But Bruce, I mean, but the mayor at the time gave you some grace and he shut that down and would not allow anyone to FOIA that meeting. I am I'm very upset about this and Karen Miller got more votes. She and Barb got more votes than anyone else in this last election. And there's many people in the village that, well, per my memory, that want her to do what she's doing. I have some questions about your ethics. And I feel that I'd like to just go forward from here and have everyone just work together. But I if people are trying to remove Karen Miller, we're gonna have a very big problem in this city because there will be other people that we are gonna be forced to want to remove. So thank you for your time and I hope we can just all move forward and be the city that we used to be where we got along together. Thank you.
Mary Lou Resnick? Can we not talk about other people while they're speaking? Thank you. Mary Lou? When she comes back, then we will.
Okay, sorry. I was, okay. Um, I just want to concur with some of the other people that were talking about their disappointment with council Miller, councilwoman Miller. Um, everybody that I had tried to talk to that were in support of her, a handful of people. I think that some of them are having buyer's remorse because they realize that the division between citizens has gotten worse, exponentially worse. And I sent her a message and I said, could you please let me know what it is that you have issues with, with the city? You've made accusations about, you know. You've made accusations about, you know, funding or not funding, but funds that were misused and made accusations about other people. And all of her followers, perhaps, maybe fifteen of them in particular, are always saying, oh, go talk to Karen, go talk to Karen, she's got all this evidence, she's got all this evidence. When I sent her a request to sit down and meet with her in private, she sent me a message saying why she wouldn't trust me and she wouldn't talk to me and all these other people have been bashing her, so she's got no reason to tell me anything. And I said, okay, fine, I'll ask you at another point in time. And it's been a couple of months and I figured, well, now is the time. Everybody says that she created this narrative and she's told all these people, but none of her followers have been able to explain it. And I think that's the basis for this division. When I told her, let's try to create peace in this kingdom again, Council Miller, Councilman Miller, didn't really even wanna talk to me. And she said, you know, I've been smashing her and repu- her reputation every chance I get. We haven't had a conversation. I've gone to see all of the people talk. And when they were running for it, for the councilman's seat, uh, you know, I listened. But I've never had any issues with her in the past, other than her behavior is impolite and ill-mannered. And when I heard about her peeking and spying from the bushes at a meeting I was supposed to be going to, I'm glad I didn't go because, you know, it, how embarrassing. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna go into this anymore, but, you know, I have this email. I'll forward it to y'all. But um, very disappointing, and I don't think she represents everybody like she says. She represents maybe the fifteen that are supporters. That's all. Have a great day. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that um would like to say anything on Zoom?
Hi, my name is Lauren Miller. Um, in addition to echoing what my sister said, um, I have found it insane since my mom has been agreed to get back into public service to begin with. Um, that I find it really disconcerting that the one person who's been asking questions over the last five years consistently and persistently has continually been thrown under the bus and continually been discredited, undermined. That was all going on before she was elected. And this is not about a personal battle for her. Unfortunately, it was made personal early on against her. She still decided, again, to my sister's point, she has nothing personal to gain by doing this. This is not fun for her. This is not fun for our family. This has been hell, to be completely honest. She's doing this because she believes that there's better things to be done in the city of Lathir Village. There's been a very small group of people who's been governing and running the city for the last, I don't know, five to seven years. And I think someone should pay attention to the fact that the person who was asking questions is asking questions for a reason. Do I agree with her approach? Mom, I love you more than anything. No, I don't agree with her approach all the time. But to discredit constantly the questions that she's asking because you think she's bullying, there is more to the story. I don't wanna get into it either, but regardless, someone's asking questions, I'm gonna listen. I think it's important for discord and for healthy debate. And there is not any of this on this council either. There are, the professionalism and respect goes both ways. I watch it on meetings every week, like the laughs and the eye roll. It is not one-sided. So let's not pretend like everyone's tried to pull my eye and make this work. So again, please just keep in mind there are multiple sides to this. Hopefully for the progress, for the sake of the city that I grew up in and I love very much, that we can all move forward. But I don't know how to fix this either, but the accusation and the consistent effort. I'm a part of a very small group of people, again, who were making these this into a thing before she was ever elected. It's been going on for years. So I don't wanna hear that this was a small group of concerned citizens who just randomly got together. That is crap. And to say that there are five followers, fifteen followers, I'm pretty sure my mom got over seven hundred votes. Um, a lot of those people are not just blind followers. They've known her for thirty years, forty, some of them. They know what she stands for, they know what her track record is. This is a mess. I don't disagree with that either. But again, there is validity behind everything or almost everything that she has tried to push through or have questions about. So I just ask that everyone consider that uh before having a council full of yes people who all agree on the same thing and don't ever ask any questions, and there doesn't seem to be oversight. So Susan, welcome to the city, and I swear with the bottom of my heart, I hope that you can help find a way.
Is there anyone else? Thank you. Was there anyone else that would like to make a comment?
Yeah, right. I'm a forty-six-year resident of Lathir. I've never seen a council so rude to one another. Actually, two to one. Mayor Protown, I've listened to you yell. I've watched the mayor put her hand up to him, Karen, stop talking, because she didn't wanna hear anymore. That is rude, and I told you. Person to person quietly one night after a city council meeting that you had done that. And you continued and tried to do it again till you saw me sitting in the back and pulled your hand away, realizing that what you were going to be doing. And I told you, that's an action of a fourth-grade girl in elementary school. I expect more from the adults that sit on city council, every, each and every one of you. Be respectful, be courteous, and most of all, be kind. Thank you.
Are there any more uh comments on the public that's here right now? Okay, so as much as I don't wanna read these comments, and I will say that because it's all the same of what's going on, however, everyone has a right to be heard. Pick it up with the, I mean, first amendment, right? So the first one is from um I don't know, I don't have to read, no. First one is from Sorry. And then I'm gonna say the last name wrong with the first name on, and I I can stop, is there? It says, don't call it cannabis. This is a weak cover word. There are many negatives for the city and its residents. Children and minors can get increased access to marijuana. Young users can have mental reduction. Marijuana is addictive. Marijuana has withdrawal effects. Marijuana could be a gateway to stronger drugs, drug dealing, robberies. The promised income generally does not arrive in quantity. Actually, I have other things for those. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I didn't have this one. And this is from Bob Barris. This one is, hello, my name is Bo- Robert Barris, Lathir Village resident. We first noticed some misinformation in LV when a friend complained about the road mileage being pushed through without vote. She talked about a new city council hopeful that was going to get to the bottom of a lot of corruption in LV. I knew that wasn't true, though, because I voted on the re- but I did vote on the revised mileage. Forward to that city official, Karen Miller being elected on a platform of getting to the bottom of corruption, ru- rooting out the bad guys and asking the tough questions. I have been interested in Lathir Village politics ever since, watching every council meeting. I've been shocked to see how destructive, chaotic, and divisive Ms. Miller's action addition is to the council. Suing her own city council, which is a hurt, was a head-scratcher, but not approving the budget was the last straw for me. There were multiple planning meetings. She said nothing, offered nothing. Then during the council meeting where the final vote was placed, she starts questioning. Was she fulfilling her promise to voters on camera? It was maddening for me as a red- resident. I cannot imagine the frustration of the rest of the council. In all the meetings I've watched, I have not seen Miller offer solutions to the problems she wants rooted out. More importantly, I have yet to see proof of corruption. She complains about not being able to get information, but as the city attorney has explained multiple times, this is because she has not properly followed the FOIA process. When Miller did make a suggestion, it was to get rid of a police car, and my jaw hit the floor. As I started discussing this with other residents, I found many shared the same concern. We decided to exercise our First Amendment rights and look into a possible recall of Miller. I reviewed the protocol for recall, and I invited people to attend the discussion. And due to COVID, held it in my backyard last Wednesday, August tenth. My wife will talk more about the meeting because there is a lot more. Before I close, I would like to refer back to a comment directed towards Councilperson Miller that was left without proper response from the last council meeting. Jason Hammond asked about the recent accusation of harassment toward the city staff and the past harassment that caused four city staffers to quit. Ms. Miller's response was flippant and dismissive. She called him a bully. She told us she blocked him on Facebook because she didn't, she didn't address the issue. I think residents would like to hear your response. I know I do. And since we, we people actually elected you to this position, and you and I don't have a Facebook relationship, I would like to know how you would expect to see a more professional, respectful, and effective corporate, a corporate, uh, her operation between you and city staff. Further, I would like to hear tonight why you thought it was okay to bully Ms. Steck, and all she did was provide you with the information you requested. Um, and that is all that uh I have for public comment. You what?
Yeah, so I tell the time this because it's gonna be longer than three minutes.
No.
What's that?
Don't you need to stop that hurry?
Yeah, three minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, I was.
I think it's gonna be longer than three minutes. I am John Roberts, a forty-five-year resident of Lathir Village and governing board chairman at Community Congressional Church. On Wednesday night, I attended a by invitation-only outdoor meeting to discuss concerns over the methods and observed tactics employed by one of our newly-elected council members, Karen Miller, since her election last year. The meeting was to discuss what we as residents of Lathir observed in the interim and possible actions we might be able to take to alter the course of the chaotic activities that have been on display at our council meeting since Karen's addition to the board. To assume, to assume that these actions are not at least partly responsible for resignations and difficulty in hiring replacement employees are naive at best. We have been projecting an image of broke, of a broken and dysfunctional community to the surrounding areas to potential businesses and employees who might consider moving or working here. Personally, my approach is for encouraging any positive suggestions that Karen may bring up and provide feedback to her and the board on actions that might help to solve the problems or perceived problems that she brings up without contributing to the continued divisiveness, destruction, and chaos. And instead, contributing to rebuilding a sense of community that is hallmark Lathir for multiple generations. I would think a positive step towards rebuilding our community is Karen could enunciate her top five or ten priorities that she feels would better our community if she were in charge. That this right to peacefully meet to address concerns with the workings of our local government was suddenly disrupted with Karen Miller emerging from behind the bushes with recording device in hand is almost beyond belief. She then refused to come into the yard to discuss any concerns and made no attempt to calm things down when her friend, the next-door neighbor, confronted former councilperson Ian Ferguson with going into his house to get a gun. I would not be shocked to hear that Karen has supporters who will step up to defend Karen of any wrongdoing, but it is certainly my impression that this incident was just another example of a long list of actions that are totally inappropriate for an elected official who is answerable to their entire community, not merely to the persons who voted for them. Many of us have our hot buttons that can cause us to unwisely choose hate and disruption over civil discourse and mutual cooperation to resolve legitimate differences of priority and opinion. It is my firm hope that our council and our residents can consciously choose to go forward using civil discourse and mutual cooperation approaches. As an example, one would assume that anything as important in the city budget would have gone through a line-by-line analysis and budget development stage. That would have been the appropriate venue for bringing up objections. My impression is that this procedure was followed and Karen, with Karen present, without objections brought up that were subsequently brought up by Karen in the formal city council meeting where the budget was to formally be approved. If true, then this would be example, an example of flat-out grandstanding to the base who elected her and not using civil discourse and mutual cooperation to get our city's business run in an efficient manner. It is my opinion that if any of our councilpersons or elected officials refuse to move forward using civil discourse as their modus operandi, it would be entirely appropriate for the community to ask any consistent offenders to step down. It is my opinion that our image of an inclusive and welcoming community would get risked if the city council meeting. Uh, the next one uh is from Ian Ferguson. Um, we had a real Scooby-Doo moment on August tenth, twenty twenty-two, when I saw Councilperson Karen Miller spying through the bushes from the neighbor's backyard next door to the Barrises, Bob and Lauren, as a private, community-organized event was assembled to discuss how we could move the city forward and hold council members accountable for their statements and actions. As the event ended, Councilperson Miller came out of the shrubbery with phone camera in hand as she attempted to intimidate the group by citing who was at the meeting. I invited Councilperson Karen Miller into the backyard where the meeting was being held, so we could address some of our concerns. She refused, but her presence escalated a heated argument between myself and the neighbor that allowed Councilperson Karen Miller access I'm sorry, between myself and the neighbor that allowed Councilperson Karen Miller access to hide in the shrubbery. The neighbor stated he was getting his gun, and at that moment, we called the police. Councilperson Miller did not attempt to defuse this gun threat. She stated, it's ridiculous for you to call the police. Currently, where AR-15 assault rifles are a concern in our nation, Councilperson Karen Miller was toned up to how quickly circumstances involving gun threats can spiral out of control. I followed, filed a re- uh, police report on scene with the Lathir Village Police Department and left shortly after. This event is no different than Lori Coon's event, than the Lori Coon's event on April second to discuss citizen concerns. Everyone should have the right to peacefully assemble. It is disgraceful that Councilperson Karen Miller felt it necessary to spy through the shrubbery and offer no meaningful dialogue to address citizen concerns at the event. All of our concerns had been and will continue to be for Councilperson Karen Miller to add value in her tenure and to do her job she was elected to do for all residents and just not the individuals that elected her into office. The last one, I need to take a break first before I read the last one.
No, ma'am, not at this time.
I have an email from Lauren Barris. She saw.
Can you please start, can you start? No, okay.
This, this is Adam Laurie. I'm a former resident of Lathir Village. While I moved away in two thousand eight, I have been paying attention to civic matters of the civic government the entire time of the present. I have family that lives in Lathir. I'm considering moving back to Lathir next summer and participate and support in activities and businesses in the Lathir community. There are a significant number of residents concerned about the way Councilperson Miller has comported herself since she was elected. I attended a meeting at the home of Lauren and Bob Barris last week on Wednesday evening to discuss the actions and possible remedies to the actions of Councilperson Miller. The premise was to discuss a possible recall and whether that was the right approach or whether, or what other options are available to address our concerns. The crux of the matter and why so many residents are concerned enough to even consider a recall are the methods Mrs. Ms. Miller has employed to achieve her goals. She has taken an us-against-them approach to her leadership, creating division within the community. Instead of looking for solutions to current village needs and focusing on keeping the city government functioning, she believes there have been abuses of power in city hall, that the city is being mismanaged, and that she was elected to get to the bottom of things. I had to, I disagree with all those assertions. The result of her approach has been to create a toxic environment around city hall and bring the, bring the dysfunctional, dysfunction of our federal government right into our local politics. Instead of focusing on the essential services a local government provides and looking to the future, she is pointing fingers, making unfounded accusations at city staff and fellow council members, and bringing a dark cloud over the city's affairs and reputation. The lawsuit she brought against the city she represents and the near catastrophe of failing to approve a budget are two glaring examples. Local government should be simple and nonpartisan. You have some incredibly dedicated, thoughtful, and well-intentioned council people giving freely of their time, and in my opinion, doing a very respectable job. We should be thankful for their efforts, not painting them out as a malicious bunch of politicians only in it for themselves. That notion is absurd if you just peek below the surface. At the meeting last Wednesday, when Ms. Miller popped up from behind the bushes, which is the actual cliche of doing something sneaky, I politely invited her to join us in civil conversation. I said, quote, "There is a group of constituents in the village very concerned about your performance, Councilperson. Would you please talk to them and hear their concerns?" End quote. She refused. It is clear that Karen is not interested in representing all residents of Lathir. Do we really want anger and division we see at the national level to enter our local discourse? The problems and challenges that face Lathir are complex and the result of many years of prior, many years and many prior administrations. The world is more complex and costly than ever in every way imaginable. There is enough strife in the rest of modern-day America. Do we really want this negative approach of governing to take root in our community? My hope is that the residents of Lathir will pay attention as I have, and when it comes time for reelection, she is soundly defeated based on the merits of her actions.
There any else?
That's only three that I have.
Last though, is there any additional public comments? Here, uh, hearing none, we'll go on to mayor and council comments. This has been very interesting, to say the least, and to Karen's daughters, I apologize because this has gotten out of hand. And I could not even imagine if someone even attempted to attack my parents. It would devastate me. So for that, in any role that I may apologize, you all agree, I apologize for that sincerely. As for everyone else, on whatever side you're on, yes, there are two sides to every story. So to answer the one about, did I get a FOIA for the meeting? Yeah, I did. I won't deny it. That's the difference. One, I will say that I won't deny it, what I've done, okay? So I not, it's not back and forth. I'm just making my, I was just.
It's not a conversation.
I'm still talking, so I just wanna let, okay? As for my hand gestures, laughter, eye rolling, I got them all written down. Thank you. One, who I am, if you've ever met me outside of this, this location, you would see. I have always talked with my hands. That has been something that I have been trying to control since high school. Call my parents and ask them about me and my hand gestures. Ask my husband about me and my hand gestures. As in eye rolling and laughing, I have sat in this seat since November. Hearing the same thing over and over and over again about FOIAs. And you're right, and I. You're right, it, it does get annoying because we're saying the same thing. Now, if you wanna know about the FOIAs, you're absolutely right. I think that you all should know what the FOIAs are in telling. The FOIAs change every single time they are submitted. I've seen them all. And the FOIAs, when you're doing a FOIA, just FYI, you are asking for something that is already a fact. You are, you are asking for something that we have documentation for. You're not to ask for someone to put together. Something like, almost like a brief of a summarization of something. That's not what FOIAs are. Is to ask, I had a meeting on April second, I wanna see the video of it. You give me the video. It's that simple. Giving a dissertation or getting an opinion behind it takes time, and that's also something that you don't have to do per the law. So that's regarding the FOIA. Just like you all are disappointed in the way that our city has gone, I'm disappointed. I wasn't here Wednesday. I was in Florida, cuz I surely want that on the record that I was not here at no meeting whatsoever. I was in Florida. But to get the phone calls that I did, I was in pure shock. So I have no idea of what happened until I got the video. And got in more shock. I don't know what's happened, and I wanna believe the good in everyone, but I've seen some really nasty from a lot of people. And so when we're talking about respect, respect goes both ways. So just as much as you want us to respect our fellow councilperson, we also ask for the same respect to come from our fellow councilperson. And just like we give respect to our residents, we ask for that to happen too. It's always a two-way street. Mary, you asked me to say that, to apologize. I have apologized to Karen numerous times. I've done it all. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, and I shouldn't have addressed you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Exactly, but you know what? Because I don't showboat for the camera. I have stopped and I've said something to Karen. I, okay, you know what, Mary, Mary? And I, Mary, I apologize for even addressing your name. I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. So I will say this, and if this will make everybody really, really happy and this will be done with this. I apologize, Karen Miller, for anything that I've done that may have hurt you, that was inappropriate or was unfactual. As for the last person that addressed me. This is the same person that sent me a letter saying that I should step down because my son died. And that's why I'm not able to uh govern uh correctly. So that's the type of notes I get, and I still come here and I still do this. Fact. Twenty twenty-one election, Bruce got nine hundred ninety-four votes, Jalen got six hundred and sixty-seven votes. Karen got seven hundred and fifteen. Barbara was in the special election. She got eight hundred and sixty-eight. Those are facts, not assumptions. Twenty nineteen election, Donna got nine hundred and three, I got eight hundred and fifty-two. Ian got eight hundred and forty-two. Salim, special election, he got eight seventy-four. Facts. I'm not assuming that. I didn't make that up. Go to Oakland County uh elections. The reason why I said that is because I'm showing you the difference between an assumption, just saying anything that you wanna say recklessly. Hurt, hope, hurtfully, and not dealing with facts. I really, really hope that we can be better than this. I will respond again to the person who sent me the horrible email about my son and how I should uh step down. I'm not stepping down. I'm staying here until November twenty twenty-three, short of me dying myself. So the emails can stop. Or you can try to recall me, whatever your, your favor is, but otherwise I plan on doing my duty. And I think I've proven myself that I do my duty no matter what. So that's, I mean, that's all that I had to say. Extremely disappointed. I have tried to say this from day one, that I hope that we can move forward. I hope we can come out with some concrete uh ways that we can move the, the city forward. And if you feel as though it's me that you're saying is corrupt, I really challenge you to give me what I did, because tell me what do I gain? And I'm always open to talk to whomever. I'll stay around afterwards also. So that's all I had to say about that, and there will be a backpack giveaway on Friday, August twenty-sixth. And we're gonna need some volunteers for that, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, I'll go next. Uh, I got a lot of city business um and updates that I'd like to get, so the first thing I wanna bring up is um. Uh, I, I know um, and this is, this somewhat new to you Sue, but uh we, we did have a backfilling program for, for water for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, that we approved back in February, and I know Pam, as you talked about earlier, has had uh. Uh, twelve hour days and, and I, I would, I would uh step that back. She's had twelve hour days for the five years that I've been here, so uh. I know she hasn't had a lot of time and she had uh other people try to work on it a little bit, but that's one thing if we now have a deputy treasurer, I'd like to put as a priority. Because that's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of revenue that we have on the table uh for the water and sewer fund that we should be, we should be collecting and moving on. Um, the, I, I was gonna ask, I know we talked about it in the study session, but, but again, Sue, can you give like a, a, just a, a quick. You know, two second update of the phone system, because I know a lot of people here didn't watch the study session, and I think that's important. So people know what happened last week.
On August fourth, uh, we had our phones shut off here by Windstream. Um, they claimed that they had notified the city in advance of that. Um, that they were not going to be servicing us any longer and that we needed to find a new carrier. However. We did not, we were not aware of that. Um, and they shut us off on. That day on the fourth, we realized that we were not receiving phone calls. It was pretty quiet. Um, and then we couldn't make calls out. They also shut our police department off, uh, which uh is. I don't know if they can do that or not, um, but it's something that they did do. Um, and we fought very hard to try and get the lines back up. Were not able to do that immediately, so we were without phones for a few days. Um, both uh the police chief and I had our phone numbers, um, our cell phone numbers, because we have city phones. Uh, put out so that people could contact us. I put out my email address so that people could contact at least ways that way. Um, we have been working to port over our numbers. At first, we were afraid that we wouldn't even be able to get our phone numbers uh back. But uh that has been given back to us. We have five lines that have been ported back over. So city hall mainline, police department mainline, our fax lines, and I'm not sure what the, the fifth line is. But at least ways you can call into city hall and they can transfer the number internally. You just can't call directly. Um, if you had a question and you wanted to call Pam directly, you wouldn't be able to do that. You'd have to go through the city hall mainline to be able to do that. Um, people have been able to get, well, I'm not sure if they're getting through to me. Maybe I'm the fifth line cuz I thought I was getting calls coming directly to me. But I digress there. Anyway, um, it has been quite a headache. Uh, we are cognizant of the issues that that did create. And we are going to make sure that we have a plan in place to make sure that does not happen again to us, hopefully. Um, so we are back up and running and that is phone issue because we were not able to just directly go out and. Um, submit a, an RFQ or an RFP for that, a request for proposal. Um, uh, and kind of shop around and get the best prices. We had to have phone lines installed as quickly as possible. We just could not be without phone lines. Uh, it is a month to month basis, so we will be going out and making sure that we're getting the best uh. Phone lines that meet our needs and that will uh not place us in jeopardy ever again uh to be without phone lines. So we will be addressing that. So that's the, the short of that.
Thanks. Um, also, just with, with the phone system being down, you know, I, I had a lot of uh. Talked to a lot of residents who were, you kind of brought up, you know, response time for various issues. Um, I've recently had contractors calling me and businesses calling me saying that they've left messages with the city and haven't been able to get ahold of the city. Um, so you know, just in terms of response time, you know, we, back in February, I think it was February two thousand eighteen. Um, we, or I put together a, a, a kind of a spreadsheet, rudimentary spreadsheet that was used for a while. Uh, at the front desk, it was then reported, kind of tracked all contacts. So if people came to the front desk, if they sent an email, if they. Um, you know, had a, a, called the city with an issue, and so by having that information logged and, and tracked, we were able to follow it. And you know, look at what percentage of, of, you know, incidents were getting closed and so forth, and that. Um, after about nine months or so, you know, that kind of just seemed to disappear and we were, you know, we were getting council reports every month. Over, you know, that we would be able to look and see what was, what was going on, and, and that allowed us to, you know, one, have a history. Um, so logging accountability, documentation and so forth, and then since then, that time since two thousand eighteen, when that stopped going into effect. I've brought up several times with the previous city administrator, and then um, I think it was recently, it was three or four months ago, and I even think Karen brought this up. Um, a month ago or so, or maybe the last meeting, I don't remember, uh, but about looking into um. Some type of customer service tracking software so that uh all, all contacts with the city can be logged. So again, we can have a history. We can get, you know, uh. Uh, reporting, get statistics reported out to council so we can see what percentage of, of, of contacts are getting closed and addressed. And, and also as we move into the future, once we have that kind of software, when an issue comes back up, we have a history as opposed to hearsay and, and, and you know. The city said they would do this, we, you know, the residents said we would do that and so forth, so I, I really like that. As, as the new city administrator, we're gonna be looking at communication and um, you know, I, I would ask that, you know, maybe in three months or so. Maybe like by November or something, maybe you could get, have a, you know, a, a few options for, for us to look at. And then also related to that, uh, another thing um that, you know, we had talked with the previous city administrator about. And I think Jalen may have also talked to her about it before she left, I think. Um, was, you know, improving our, our texting capabilities, so having text blasting to the residents who wanna sign up for it for various topics. Um, and there are all sorts of services that, that are out there that provide that, so I think as you think about your communication plan towards the city would be great. If, if you could include that maybe in, in November as well. Um, other questions I have, um, you know, um, I'm just curious of this, the status, and maybe you know, if you were dealing with the status of. The two missing laptops from a former councilperson, and we got that, we got, okay. Um, Scott, you know, you said you were gonna update us on the development agreement at another time.
We're meeting Wednesday morning with the uh team from Panera, our planner and Suzie to. Work out whatever, whatever remaining issues there are, so we should have a, should have something back to council soon.
Um, all right, and then the next thing is that, I'm not gonna, not gonna make friends with three, three people, but um. Uh, you know, I know with, with the um loss of our prior city administrator, the salaries of three of our employees were increased. To uh for the extra um work that they were taking on, and I know that it, there was gonna be some transition period, and I just wanted to make sure that we. Um, are. They all got back to normal, great. Um, one other thing, uh, the um, that I was also working on with the previous city administrator was um. About eight or nine months ago, um, the state changed the regulations with respect to Act fifty-one um to give the. Cities more leeway in, in their um approach to how they split up their money between local and local roads. Uh, I'm sorry, between local and major roads, um, as long as they have an asset plan. Um, so that was kind of happening during the, the, the transition or the, the, the loss of, of our prior city administrator. So I don't know if that's something that you can, over time with your long list of things could, could look into, because it would be great if we had that flexibility to be able to. Uh, spend, you know, approach the money uh into those two local and road funds, local and major road funds. Um, and have that additional flexibility instead of being limited to, I think, the twenty-five percent that we can move from major to local. Regarding all the. Comments tonight, um, just two comments, two quick comments. One, um. You know, at our study session last week, um, councilwoman Kenez asked. You know, why do we need an ethics ordinance? And I think this example is exactly why we need an ethics ordinance, because I think, you know. Having somebody hiding in the bushes and potentially illegally taping a, a private meeting um is something that. You know, we don't have a, the, the ability to um. To do anything in terms of, of ethics, and that's, that's why we're working on a ethics ordinance. Two specific items I'd like to say about the comments to, to Karen Copas. Um, you know, if you think that I've done anything unethical. Report it. I, I just reported. I, I disagreeing with somebody's, you know, political stance. Is not something that is unethical, and if you think I've done anything unethical, I encourage you to take it to the city attorney. Or to say, take it to uh the, the, the chief of police. Please do so, because there's nothing out there. Um, and then to um Lori Kuntz, so she's left, but uh in terms of hiding files. Um, I've offered all the files about infrastructure uh to Ms. Miller for a very long time. Um, she's been able to get those files. She didn't wanna get them from me, so she, she had the option of voiding them, and so she's voided them. So it, it's political theater, and that's all I have to say about this stuff tonight.
I'll just say something quick. I don't have anything major to say. Um, I just wanted to thank you, Sue, for uh finding a deputy treasurer. That is something I've been asking for, for quite a while, because um Pam is tired of us. So uh we wanna make sure we have. We wanna make sure we promote longevity in our community, so. Um, I just wanna thank you for that, and thank you Pam for all your hard work, and I have nothing else to say.
Few things to say. First of all, it's kind of ironic. Um, the Facebook villagers page. Um, I was introduced to that page when a friend and neighbor told me that I was being bashed. On the page uh two thousand fifteen because of Michigan first. Couple of the people who were at the meeting on Wednesday night were the people who started that, people I didn't even know. And so that bashing has continued, personal attacks on me since two thousand fifteen, continued through two thousand nineteen with the Road Village. That bashing became so bad, I blocked Dawn Medley, who lives in New York now. Her bullying was un- unbearable. I blocked Adam Laurie, who lives in Southfield. I blocked Jason Hammond. And uh Mary Lou Resnick, who said I didn't offer to meet with her or wouldn't meet with her. She's been a, also one of the people that have been personally attacking me for all of this time. She's been a, also one of the people that have been personally attacking me for all of this time. Many of those people were at the meeting. Um, and as far as the budget goes, we didn't really have a budget development process. At one point we were spending seven hundred thousand dollars over what we were bringing in. That's very concerning. And so my questions didn't get answered. And so I voted, I voted no. I think that I have the right to do that. Um, I would also like to say, despite what a small group of residents would lead you to believe. I've been a committed public servant for thirty plus years in the communities of Lathrow Village and Southfield, and that remains to be true. I'm committed to this community and to representing residents, especially those who have not had their voices heard while a small group. Has governed and run the city over the course of the last four to five years. It is unfortunate that differences in opinion coupled with my efforts to ask tough questions and challenge accountability have resulted in anything other than progress for our city. I'm hopeful with the onboarding of Susan Montenegro as our new city administrator. I will continue to ensure accountability and how the city is moving forward and continue asking those tough questions to find solutions. And I'm committed to fostering a safe and fair political process. I appreciate and would like to thank all the residents who have reached out to express their support over the last few days. Uh, beyond that, the incident is being referenced tonight is an ongoing investigation. It was turned over to the Oakland County Sheriff's Department. And I don't think it's appropriate to even be uh commenting on that. So I am not going to comment about what happened on Wednesday. Just picture me hiding and under the bushes. I, not, not even possible. So. Anyway, um, there will be sure more to come from this.
Yeah, so. So you're done? Yes, okay. Um. And I think that's all of us, and so I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
They're adjourned. Thank you.